Call the meeting to order. I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Commissioner Waldrich?
Present.
Commissioner Thompson?
Present.
Commissioner May?
Present.
Commissioner Unger?
Present.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Present.
And I do not believe we have any citizens' comments. I'll double check again. Do we have any?
No, sir, we do not.
We'll move on to discussion item number one, which is the-
Mayor, ma'am.
Yes.
Ma'am.
Yeah, Commissioner.
I would like to move, I'd like to make a motion to move the discussion item number four down to action items. Yes, discussion item number four, I want to make sure I said that right, down to action items instead of discussion items before we get started.
I'll have to ask Solicitor Ross, is that in a special meeting if it's not already? If it's listed as a discussion item, can we move to action item?
The only way that we could do that is for you all to take a motion and vote to move it to an action item.
All right, so we have a motion to move item number four in the discussion items to action items.
I would second that motion.
Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Thompson. Any discussion on that? I'll ask the clerk, well, I'll take a, I'll take a vote. All those in favor say aye. The opposed say nay.
Nay.
Okay, we have one nay, motion carries. So move that to the number three, which is I think number seven on the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor.
I was a nay. Just to make-
Two nays, two nays, motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to discussion item number one, which is the Sister City update. I'll ask the city manager, or, oh, we have Mr. Marshall on, Bill Marshall is on the call with us. You're muted, Bill, if you want to, if you want to hop on and explain to us.
You know, I've, I've had enough Zoom meetings, I ought to know the mute and unmute button, I apologize. But I, I don't use GoToMeeting that much, sorry, I was running a little late, I had to put the app on. But I'll, I'll make it real quick, and of course, you guys are probably familiar a little bit with Frankfurt and the Sister City situation we have here. It's going on four years now that we've had this relationship with Shimomoto Cho in Osaka Prefecture in Japan. And we, Ari, who's kind of the brains of the outfit, my, my beautiful wife there, who is from Japan, and I think you met her, we met you a while back, Mayor, talking about some things early on. And so, congratulations, I know it's a little late, but welcome, welcome aboard, I guess. So, we, we've had a great relationship and with Shimomoto over the last couple of years. Actually, we, they had a mayoral change as well, and, and, you know, they maintain the continuity of the relationship. And, you know, we, we kind of were hoping to have some more stuff last year. We actually had some kids scheduled to come here from there. But of course, that got put on hold with, with everything else. So we're, we're looking forward to this year, and, you know, the Olympics were supposed to be there last year as well, but that got postponed off to this year, and I think they're going to do everything they can to, to have those games, you know, either, even if it doesn't have fans in the stands, so. But I guess you all saw the, kind of the fact sheet that Ari made and, and Charme sent it around and stuff. And I, I don't know, is, is there, you know, is there any questions, I guess, I should ask first off the bat? Okay, yes, yes, Mayor.
I'll ask your question.
Okay.
This is our first, you know, introduction to the Sister City program, I'm sure, except for Commissioner Waldrich, she's been on the commission, but I guess, how much, so I see that we have the program. How much do we as a city do with, with the Sister City in Japan? How much work is it for our staff? How mu, what does this entail for us?
Sure, great questions. So we also have, you may, some may remember way back when, a long time ago, there was a Sister City relationship with the city in Dominican Republic. And that kind of went dormant after a number of years. And then when Ari and I moved out here, like I said, you know, she's from Japan, and we were looking, we did a lot of stuff with Lexington Sister City, that's Shin-Hidaka over there, that's a horse relationship. And so, of course Georgetown has Tahoe, which is in Aichi Prefecture, which is where Toyota Town is, and there's this kind of a car-centric relationship. And ours, Shimomoto Cho, has Yamazaki Distillery there, which is owned by, or started by the guys whose company became Suntory. Now, Suntory merged with Jim Beam Brands, and so we have the Jim Beam Bottling Plant here in Frankfurt, even though it's, it's kind of distilled down there in Claremont, but, you know, they, they bottle like over a dozen different brands there. And so that turned out to be a good kind of relationship because it gave Kentucky, you know, we, we look at this a lot, not just Frankfurt and, and Shimomoto Cho, but how does it help Kentucky in general as well with the other sister cities that are here? And so that kind of gave our third signature industry, bourbon whiskey, a connection in Japan as well. And so, you know, Kentucky has, Toyota was picked Kentucky to come to first. That was the first major assembly plant for a Japanese company over 30 years ago. Of course, we, we have Topi here, and they, they came even a little before, before Toyota did. And so we have over 200 Japanese companies in the state of Kentucky, the, the largest per cap, you know, for any state, number of Japanese companies here. And so what we do, the, I know, I remember your question, but I just wanted to fill in a little bit of background, too. So we, we wanted to do a lot more than the previous Sister City. And so what we wanted to look at was not just student exchange, but also possibilities for economic development and helping to recruit companies and, and kind of, you know, showing some more emphasis on that, because it's very competitive out there, as you all know. And so in terms of the folks that are part of the city, that, that are part of the city, that are part of sister cities, Laura is, is, the county attorney is on our board, we have a board of directors for the LLC that is Frankfurt Sister Cities Commission. And so Laura's on there, and then Rebecca's on there, too. So, and in terms of monetary commitment, it's, it's very small. It's, it's only the, the annual dues of Sister City International, which is about $600. And, and I think the, the return that we get on that $600 is, is certainly well worth it in terms of helping, you know, our kids and expanding their horizons. A couple of years ago, we took a group of 16 kids. Houston Barber over there at Frankfurt Independent Schools was instrumental in securing a grant that we were able to take a, a large contingent of, of our school kids over there for, for two weeks. And I think that really opened a lot of doors. Since then, we have had much more engagement with Shimomoto in terms, and now, this last year, it's been a little bit of a challenge, but we've had a lot of Zoom conferences, not just, you know, the, the cultural and language stuff, but even doing some things like cooking demonstrations and that sort of thing. And normally, we have an annual meeting or kind of a festival, it's a New Year's thing. And, but of course, we had, we had to bypass that one this year. But the, but I think as far as what the city gains from this partnership, I think is, is, is very big for, for very little commitment, you know, especially monetarily.
Sounds good. Now, I like, now, I know we talked about it a couple of years ago, Bill, and I appreciate-
Yes, sir.
And I, I like the, the economic development aspect of it as well. If we don't have any further discussion, we'll refer this to staff and continue on that relationship.
And you guys have got our address on there, and we have a Facebook page. Ari has Frankfurt Japan Club, and certainly, please like those Facebook pages. And there's contact info on there, if at any time you all have any questions or suggestions or things you'd like to see, we are certainly more than open, because we want to, we, it, this is really, you know, a Sister City relationship is what you make of it, right? So as, as much as, if you want to do stuff, we'll, we'll keep rolling with it. But if you've got extra things, we got plenty of room, we can do lots of stuff, so. Well, we really appreciate your all's support, and, and thank you so much.
We hear that, thank you, Bill.
All right, thank y'all.
All right, good information. We'll move on to the item number two on the discussion items, the Sustainable Strategies Contract Renewal. I'll ask the city manager here.
Rebecca Hall should be on here, we've had a conversation about this, there she is. I'll let Rebecca take this on.
You all should have received in the information that Charme sent you, information about what grants Sustainable Strategies was instrumental in helping us secure, and also a cost benefit analysis and a copy of last year's contract. So their contract is up for renewal. I would suggest that we renew it, especially right now, we've got a new administration in, Sustainable Strategies has many contacts with the Biden administration in Washington. They have contacts that we simply don't have, sitting here in Kentucky. Available to answer any questions if you guys have any specific questions. I know the mayor has talked to Andy Seth with Sustainable Strategies a couple times, and he, if you all would like to ask too many questions, we can certainly, sometime in the future, get him on either a Zoom call or a GoToMeeting or this conference call. You have questions for him?
Any questions? I refer it to staff, I think, I think I had a discussion with them last week. Of course, any influence we have in Washington is good, and you see the numbers, the pending numbers especially, so. Yes, Mr. Ross.
Then Mayor, if there's no objection, we'll put the contract on for renewal on the voting meeting.
Without objection, yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Waldrich?
Yes, well, I was getting ready to say what she said, she beat me to it, but I was also going to add that I believe that moving forward with this is very positive, and I think that this right here will get us, continue to keep us a good foot in Washington, definitely with the change of administration. And when Ms. Penny comes in in March 1, it'll allow her to have that, those people to be able to reach out to Andy Seth as well on a regular basis to be able to have those conversations, so. Completely agree, so. And she said what I was going to say to put it on there, so we can make that official next meeting.
Thank you. All right, moving on to discussion item number three, the NEA Grants for Arts Project. Again, Mrs. Hall?
I think you guys have the memo or agenda item that we worked up. This is in reference to, if you will remember, Melanie came on from Gilchrist Sculpture Park in January and gave you guys an update of what we've done in the past. We would like to apply for another grant for total project of 100,000. We would ask for a grant for 50,000, and then our match would be 50,000, but that would be spread over two years. I will let you know that typically what we ask for is not what we get. They usually reduce that sum, so I'd look for us not to get that entire 50,000, so our match would be reduced. This is to help with additional murals, sculptures, sidewalk art, that kind of thing that you all discussed.
Any discussion or questions for Mrs. Hall? Commissioner Thompson?
If the, if the overall amount that is provided to us in the grant is reduced, does our city expense go up to that $100,000 mark, or are we just matching whatever the federal grant offers?
It's a one-for-one match, so whatever we get, we will expect to match.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Waldrich?
Um, there we go, I'm looking right here, sorry Rebecca. And Ms. Hall, is this time-sensitive, or is this okay to go over to our next agenda for approval? Or is this something that's time-sensitive that we would need a motion now?
I think we need to put in our intent this week, which we can do. It doesn't require resolution or anything, I just want you guys to be aware that we intend to apply, if it's okay with you all, just because at some point it will impact our budget.
So without objection, we'll ask staff to put in our intent to apply, and then we can put that on the voting meeting at the end of the month, how about that?
Sounds good.
Great. All right, and now we'll move on to action items. And the first tax item is the 2020 Property Tax Assessment Roll Invoice Process. And I'll ask the city manager to enlighten us.
I see Ms. Boyd opening her microphone now, sir.
All right, I'll ask Ms. Boyd.
We had a conversation about this today.
Good evening, can everyone hear me okay? So basically, this is just a request to approve the payment to the PVA's office of $40,000. We've done this over several, several years, I think going back to at least 2016, probably even before that, but that's what I saw in our accounting system. And it's actually outlined in the state statute, since we use the PVA's assessments for our property tax assessments, then the statute requires a $40,000 payment to the PVA, because our assessments are below $2 billion, I think, is the, is the amount in the statute. And you should have gotten a copy of the invoice and a copy of the Kentucky revised statute. So I'm just asking that you approve payment, please.
Make a motion to approve payment?
We have a motion to approve payment. We have a second by Commissioner Unger. Any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Commissioner Waldrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Yes. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Next back item is the Shop Local Frankfurt Program. And we'll bring this back, do we have, is Mrs. Hacker on the line?
She's on.
Okay, great. So we talked about this a couple of weeks ago, and I will, okay, Commissioner May?
Little guidance here, Solicitor Ross, is it acceptable for me to participate in the conversation, or if I'm going to recuse myself from the vote, should I step away now?
I believe you could listen to the conversation if you so desire, but if you're going to recuse yourself, the appropriate time to step out would be when it is time to take a vote.
Okay. I'll turn it over to Mrs. Hacker, and this is something we talked about a couple of weeks ago, so she'll refresh us, okay, thanks.
So I did provide, was able to reach out to the Yiffy platform, get the additional information that you all requested in terms of what our fees would be. In the agenda abstract that you all received, I tried to break it down into three different options, so, you know, maybe we can make it a little bit easier to decide which way the commission would like to go. And the first option is to do an in-house voucher program that would, you know, be distributing vouchers. City staff would do this to households within the city of Frankfurt that would then be usable at participating businesses. This would, I think, put a little bit more work on our merchants in terms of redeeming them, but it is an option that we can do. The second option is to proceed with using Yiffy as our gift card platform, and we can do that without a city contribution. You know, we can move, authorize setting up that program, allow residents to purchase those gift cards, to use those funds in our local businesses on their own, open it up for other private businesses, corporate sponsors, if they so choose to, you know, purchase gift cards that way. Option three would be to do the exact same thing, set up the platform, and then go ahead and put in a city of Frankfurt contribution. What we had proposed originally was $100,000, that would get $4,025 gift cards that would be preloaded, available for anyone to use. And that's fees for those, $1.25 per gift card. So it is a price reduction from, as a bulk fee, so that would come to $5,000 total. So we would have, we would be authorizing an amount of $105,000 total for that part of the program. Just a few notes, a few other points of clarification I was asked about. If we do not, if we put those 4,000 gift cards out and they are not claimed, we get back all of that money, including fees. So fees are not assessed, we do get back the fees associated with each card in addition to any intent funds. And then the other point of clarification is about the BOGO program that, based on some communities that I was able to do a webinar with who utilized the Yiffy program, they recommended doing the matching because they saw the, a quicker return on those dollars back into the community. Because people were more, it was more in the forefront of their minds to go out and spend that money, you know, once they had put in a $25 contribution and matched with another contribution. But we can go whichever direction you guys would like to, and I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Commissioner Unger?
Hey, thank you, Blair. So I just want to clarify, so if we, with option three, if we were to say we wanted individuals to be able to claim these gift cards, not worry about the buy one, get one, the city takes on that fee, not the citizen, correct? A $1.25?
That is correct, yes. And it's the same even with the BOGO. If a resident was to purchase, if we were going to do a matching fund, the resident would pay the fee, just the standard $1 plus $5 fee on their individual purchase, but they would not pay a fee on the matching $25 that we would then contribute to them, because the city has already paid that fee.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Thompson?
Blair, I just want to say thank you for the laying out of the options with this. I know that last time you were here, we had some questions about the program and asked for you to review that, and you did a very good job of explaining this and laying out the fees this time. I appreciate that, and I know the rest of the commission, without speaking for them, feel the same way. I think this really gives us an idea of what we're looking at as an economic impact and what, what our costs are, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Waldrich?
Well, of course, I support the program, and I know it comes down to these. You know, with one, I know I spoke with you in adding sort of one in that manner, because my focus was our city residents, and I knew that when you and I spoke before, putting the gift cards out for them to be claimed was going to be able to open it for anyone, that could be Lexington, Louisville, or anywhere could claim cards, and that didn't sit well with me, only because I want to help my community with two people, you know, with helping my businesses and the residents with $1. And if we let them go out to other communities, yes, those community members could come into Frankfurt, but what could happen is they accept these gift cards and keep it from our residents, and then they may never come to Frankfurt, because they may never decide to drive here. They may have great intentions to, but they may not. And so the goal is to try to keep it here with the residents, and that's why I sort of came up with that. And I know it is a little bit extra work for, for our businesses, but I just wanted to, as much as possible, to be able to keep it in our city. That's the purpose of helping our residents here in the city, as well as our local businesses. And so that's sort of what I have to say on that, just to share with the other commissioners on, on thoughts on that, even though it is a little bit of work. The other, I do like the idea that you came up with, with the buy one, sort of get one, only because that, that puts another $25 into our local businesses, right? And so it's, it's sort of a, not a donation, we'll get something in advance, but it's sort of saying, hey, I'm going to step up to help our local communities, and I'm going to be given another $25. But, you know, I guess the downside of that would be, you know, some people may not be able to afford that $25. And so that sort of, you know, that sort of hinders me being on with that, even though I absolutely love that idea. But again, that then, we then create that number to go down in the people that we're helping, and some of those people on the other side of that would be actually the people we would really want to help, and really probably need it more than the people that could afford the $25 plus the fees for those gift cards. So I can, I'm teeter-tottering on that as well. So I'm not sure, you know, if all the other commissioners want to share on that. I know Kelly's sort of recruiting himself, and I'm not sure if, if he really would have to do that, Laura, I'm not sure, because he is a business owner, but he's not telling people that they have to come to his business as well. But I guess if he recruits themselves, he's able to put his business on that list of businesses. And if he, if he didn't recruit themselves, maybe he wouldn't be able to put his business on that. I guess it's sort of how I would look at it, to, for everyone to understand why he would recuse himself from this, if that makes sense, correct, Laura? Okay. And so that's sort of what I have to say on it, you know, I want this to move forward. I, you know, wanted to move it forward in the last one, because I knew it wasn't going to be a huge expense, you know, over the 5,000, and that's something that I feel like our mayor could make a decision on and move forward. But, you know, I'd really like to hear from all the commissioners, you know, you know, your thoughts on which program or which, which one would be best. I really, you know, I think we need to talk this out in order to make a viable decision and be able to move forward. And I know Kelly's recruiting himself, but I would really like to hear from you, Kelly, just to share with us, you know, from a business perspective as well, if that's possible. I know he can't vote, but if he recruits us, but can he at least share? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, yes, Solicitor Ross?
And Kelly, or I'm sorry, Commissioner May and I spoke about this earlier tonight, and I think that he has decided he'd like to refrain from participating in the discussion, just to be on the safe side.
Understandable.
And I'll weigh on this. My, my thought is that the second or the third option are the best, and one, we have the potential to buy one, get one free. It does allow us to potentially leverage the money more by allowing residents in the community to buy a gift card, and it will match that double. But then the residents will not only have to pay $25, but they have to pay an additional fee to get that card. Now, they'll get our card as well, that we've already paid the fee for, so we, we, they'll pay $27.25, and they'll get $50, which is a good deal. But there are some people, though, who may not be able to come up with $27.25. So we go with the option where we just, we're going to load this with $100,000, we're going to pay the fee of $5,000, and then we're going to open it up to 4,000 people. They're going to be able to download it $25 at a, at a time, no strings attached on that, but they have to spend it at, so our local businesses would go in, and it's my understanding, Ms. Hacker, that local businesses will be able to go in and they'll put their name in the, in the system so that they'll be able to accept the money, which we- local businesses will be able to go in and they'll put their name in the, in the system so that they'll be able to accept the money, which we encourage them to do. And it's just, it'll, it'll circulate a hundred thousand dollars into the community. I think that's the best option. We don't put strings attached. If it goes quickly, great, we'll reevaluate. We could load, we could load it again if we wanted to, right?
Yes, we can load at any time.
I think that's, yes, Commissioner Waterage.
Oh, you can go ahead and finish. I just was putting my hand up, so I was next. I just had some listening. Are you finished? Okay. Uh, well, my question, my question was with Blair. I know that we had a, a conversation on the side in regards to this. Uh, you know, this is an idea that I've been working on since last March. Um, but one question I did have, I know the last meeting, you know, you didn't have the numbers down. But obviously we knew we weren't going to spend over five thousand dollars, so that, that wasn't a big issue for me. But what I did say was, is there a way for the gift cards for us to get maybe a Buffalo Trace or Frankfurt plant board? Other people who want to see our community do well sponsor that five thousand dollars. That way half the card can say city and half the card can say our sponsor. Therefore, we wouldn't have to pay that. Is it possible to get that printout of the gift card of two different, the city and a business? To maybe, maybe we could get someone to solicit to sponsor that five thousand dollars so we're not?
Yeah, so you can get sponsorships in whatever way we want to do that. The platform is set up to allow that however we want to do it. Um, I, I'm not sure, um, that would be a Ms. Ross question about, you know, how sponsorships work, like with the city and things like that. Um, but what a lot of communities do is give them sponsorship that cover the um, fees for the resident. So that one dollar plus five percent for a certain amount of cards for the resident. So, you know, that could be attractive as a BOGO because then you truly are paying twenty-five dollars for a fifty-dollar card. You have another business who will sponsor the coverage of those fees. Um, we get our own website platform and can list any other partnering organization sponsors on there. And we design our card. Um, I will design what that card looks like. So yes, we have the freedom and flexibility to do any of that.
Commissioner Thompson.
Actually, I think Commissioner Unger had her hand up before me. I'll yield to her if she.
Thank you, sir. Um, yeah, I, I think I'm leaning towards option three. Um, uh, but, but now that you brought up the fact that we can maybe get some sponsors for the um, the BOGO option for that fee. Has there been any discussion there with, with anyone, any businesses locally to do that?
Not yet. So this would be, so you guys would authorize, the commission would authorize us to move forward. And then we would be able to work with the company, you know, to administratively set all these things up. So, you know, if the commission chooses to go that route, um, then what we can do is start to work with some of our other agencies. I can work with um, Ms. Ross about, you know, just making sure we're all good or if those sponsorships need to run through maybe um, another nonprofit agency. You know, who we would like GFI or someone who would, we would work with, with all of that, you know, we could take care of all that. We don't have to have um, all those things nailed down. The authorization is um, literally just to sign us up, the city of Frankfurt with YF D to get that platform going. And then we can build on once we get started.
Okay.
Commissioner Thompson.
I, I understand, uh, Ms. Hacker, if we take the option one that would provide a, a card for every household in the city. Um, if we lean towards um, option three, does the staff have any um, particular plans for distribution? To ma- make this available or have there been any discussions about that?
So it would be open to um, anyone to claim. I have already been in contact with GFI and tourism um, and the chamber. And so we would all advertise this. A lot of communities who have utilized the YF D program have um, had really good success. Um, advertising their tourism agencies as, you know, an incentive for people to come visit. Um, but the gift cards themselves would be available to actually claim by going to our website. So we would do, you know, a comprehensive media campaign, social media, websites, partner agencies, newsletters, you know, to let people know, this is the program. This is what's out there and this is how you go there. And it would all be housed on just, you know, one, what should each of the organizations share or two from their own respective sites.
What's the um, timeframe that um, we are looking at to have the program run? Is there, is there a standard that people use or is?
Um, some of the other communities who I receive information from, they, I think, set an initial period. Ones who offered BOGO promotions, um, set a period of about four to six weeks. And all of their promotional dollars were made. And that, they expressed the desire that they wish they had more funds to put into it. It was very popular. Um, that was all during the holiday season, so, you know, take that as you will. But um, typically it sounds like most communities have um, a pretty quick turnaround on that. We can set what our timeline is and at the end of that timeline, um, that's when the preloading card and the BOGO promotion would expire on the website. And we would get funds returned to us at that time. Um, we can also, once we establish the program, the program will just exist on YF D. Um, and is available for anyone to fund into in the future, to, for individuals to continue purchasing cards. For us to revisit at another time if we ever want to put more money into it or anything like that.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Any other discussion? Okay.
We can entertain a motion because I do think that, let me just say one more thing. On this one, I do think option three because, you know, it'd be nice to have a sponsorship and allow people to do the buy one, get one free. But that's not what we have on, right now, we could pass this and do the simplest. And, and, and that is just make it available to everyone and get money flowing through our community in February and March. And hopefully help out some businesses. I do have one question and that is, can we target this to uh, maybe organizations in need first? That twenty-five dollars would mean much more than, than others. Is that possible?
Of course, yeah. I'll make it a point that we will, um, as soon as we have the website open and running and information, we can distribute that to those organizations within the community.
Hopefully there are no issues there, so. That's the only question I have.
Commissioner Waterage.
And so when we put it out, um, layer to organizations, you know, for them sort of have the first, you know, to get it out to their perspective. People that would, you know, um, get items from them. Um, how is it that I can't sign up for five? I know I haven't seen the website part, but how is it that I myself can't sign up for five or sign up my five children? That I'm a taxpayer, that I'm an adult and a taxpayer. Um, so that one family doesn't do sort of like Black Friday, buy all the Playstations and sell them, you know, for five thousand dollars. You know, how can we block that on our end to make sure that is evenly distributed and not to one family or one organization?
We can um, put limits on it so we can determine by name and email address. Um, how many cards can be distributed per person? Um, you know, obviously there are always going to be loopholes with those things. Um, but typically other communities who have utilized this, they didn't report. That was one of the big concerns is how you do limit that. Um, some of the communities that I spoke with either, I think most put a limit of four. Um, per person because their idea was that would allow them to put up to a hundred dollars in of their own money and be matched with a hundred dollars. Um, and they didn't, they said that there really wasn't a problem of abusing that system, so. But we can set it up. That's the nice thing about running through this established website platform is that um, we can set all those things up. And then the website automatically takes care of those things for us.
Thank you. Um, I have a follow-up mayor if I may.
Sure.
Um, also, a- and I know um, the mayor said he was in support of, of three. Um, what does that look like, you know, since we are opening up to more people than just our city residents? You know, would that discussion, would that discussion maybe had with the county to see if they would like to join the same program? And then it be a card for the city and the county? And they can also add, since it's going to be more people, that means county's going to be able to do this. So I do know that Michael Mueller had really liked the idea when I brought it up. I think he's brought it up to his uh, court a couple of times. Um, you know, is that an option? I, I believe that we're, we seem to all be on board with moving forward. We just want, try to get the biggest bang for our buck and making sure we do right by our, by our taxpayers' money. By our taxpayers and residents and our local. So is it maybe an option that we can move this forward in voting for an option? But at the same time, possibly having a conversation with the county to see if they're still interested in that? And would that cut our expense and would that open it up to add more money? So more people in the city and the county now would have that option versus people outside of our community.
I mean, I, yes, I think that's fine. Any organization can put money into this. Um, we can even establish this program and, you know, the county can choose to put money into it, the way it's set up. Um, I think what it would affect is uh, with us, with it being a city program. We are signing up, you know, as the authorizing agent for this. Um, we set the parameters on the businesses that are accepted. And so we are going with the same parameters that we had for our small business grants. And so that does include businesses within city limits. Um, I think that if the fiscal court would like to participate, and this may be a better question that this interim city manager or city solicitor could provide clarification on. But um, to me, it would seem like if the fiscal court did want to participate, um, you know, that would, that would put more money into it. Potentially the way we are to allow more people to take advantage and then open it up to um, businesses within county limits as well. Um, you know, maybe include, I, I know that they are starting their own small business grant program. And so maybe it opened up to those businesses who fit those parameters. Um, that's just my thought.
Yes, sir. City manager, Russell.
The only thing that comes to mind there, Mayor, uh, Commission, is that uh, if we ask for other partners, it would delay uh, some of the funding going out. Getting this program off the ground as soon as possible. Um, and then that would probably have to go through one of their fiscal court meetings, so uh, to get the funding approved. So that's the only thing I would, I would offer at this time. It just depends on how fast. And I think when we first originally started, February, March were downtimes, uh, slower times for our businesses here, so. But I would certainly take it to the judge if you wanted me to, Mayor, and ask him.
Well, maybe it's something lighter, but I think right now that we've got, we're discussing it in an action item. I'd be, I'd, I'd love to hear more discussion or entertain a motion to move forward.
I think, I mean, are we, it's really, really hard to suppress. Um, I'm thinking, what, number three, everyone wants to go with that, but it looks like that's, is that the buy one? Uh, so everyone can claim or they can buy one, get one. So if I go to claim a free one, I can claim a free one or I can buy a twenty-five dollar card and get a free one as well. Is that what I'm reading?
No. Um, it would be, you all can direct us which way you would like to go. If you would like to offer it as a buy one, get one. We cannot through YF D set it up both ways and have all this thing control everything. So it would either be a buy one, get one promotion or it would be, you know, cards available to claim and distribute that way. Either way, and it does not change what our fees would be or our contribution.
Mayor, ma'am.
Yes. Commissioner.
Okay, I would like to move, make a motion to accept option three with the option of dispersing cards to individual and not the buy one, get one. So we can move forward as we've been working on this since March. Um, you know, I think we can move forward, but I think there could be a conversation later on if this goes well, Mayor. That maybe that's when we can bring in the county to go ahead and do this. Uh, you know, I, I think we've sort of dragged our feet with this long enough. But I do love the idea about the county and more money getting in and more businesses and more people in our city and county getting this. So I think that would be the motion and then we'll see how that goes. And maybe by then Blair can have that conversation or you, Mayor, um, to see if the county would like to get in and add a little bit more money to this. And outstretch and sort of spread that out to the county and to county residents as well.
Great.
So my motion would be accept uh, option three, I'll go back, accept option three with the suggestion of getting uh, individual cards to individuals. And not the buy one, get one.
Okay, great.
At this time.
I'll second that.
Okay. But Commissioner Waterage, second by Commissioner Unger. Any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to please call the robe.
Commissioner Waterage?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. May, recusing himself. Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Yes. All right, motion carries. Great. Commissioner Waterage.
Yeah, I would just like to follow up, Mayor. Um, in regards to um, where, I know we're moving forward with this. Um, how will we go ahead and get a contact with the businesses? Will there be a website you'll get out so businesses know when they can start signing their businesses up? And also be able to get this in the newspaper before um, the gift cards are available. So we'll run that in the newspaper, hopefully be able to get that on our website, get the website up and running. So we can at least advertise this for a good week to let people know that it's going to happen on a certain date. Uh, that refers back to uh, Ms. Commissioner Unger's statement of, you know, trying to be fair. So we want to get it out there to say, hey, it's out there, you've known about it for a week, it's on our website, it's in the paper, it's here, there. Businesses know, they've received an email from us. Um, and then this date is that when they're going to drop and then you'll be able to get on there. So I'm not sure what that timeline looks like, but how will they be able to find that information out?
I will direct that to staff. Uh, Blair?
Yeah, so um, as soon, I, within twenty-four hours of when we um, return this signed contract, just that we are going to be a YF D participant. Um, our website platform will be up and running. And at that point, we will be able to start onboarding businesses. And residents can even start going on and purchasing their own gift cards. Um, so DFI Tourism Chamber, they all know this is coming. We also have our database of our businesses who've received our small business grants. And I will begin contacting all of them tomorrow to offer them this, um, send them the documentation. They fill out, they go to the website and they just enter their information into the website and then they're automatically onboarded. So we will be working on that. Um, and then we can go ahead and be advertising that website because people will be able to visit it as soon as it's up. Um, purchase their own gift cards. And then once we have all the funds received um, by YF D and our uh, mat- or not matched gift cards, but are already preloaded gift cards ready. Then we'll have a date and we can advertise that. So really we should be having businesses up and it all be advertised um, within a week.
Right. Commissioner Waterage.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, you know, I did see a comment out there. This is, this is not a program for the, there will not be any financial um, statuses that will be, you know, uh, known. So this is just something you will sign up with your email, I'm assuming, and your uh, address. So we will not know your financial stability. Uh, you know, this is a program to help our community members and to help our local uh, businesses. Um, and so, you know, bringing this card into a restaurant does not mean that you are in need and that you cannot pay for something. Uh, because uh, every single person as now is the way I'm seeing it, anybody in the county, the city or surrounding areas can really apply for this, correct? Uh, and so this could be anyone. So we do not need any financial information or statuses or any filling out information of that nature. It's just literally a gift card. You uh, put your email in and phone number, I'm assuming, and that's it. Some people are a little concerned about that. So I just wanted to clear that up, that it's not for a particular group. But we would love for, you know, those that are truly in need to really take advantage of this definitely. Um, you know, it just helps both. So, thank you.
And I want to, one thing I'll bring up is the, the fee that we're paying, it sounds like we would get, get some of that back if the cards aren't used. But I can't imagine the cards will not be used. And if they're not, we'll get the money back, so we're really not out. But if we don't use it, shame on us. Let's get out there and support our businesses. So thank you Blair for, uh, for helping us out on this. I think this is a good thing to do and we'll see how it goes.
Thank you Blair.
All right. So now we'll move on to the next action item. So now we'll move on to the next action item, which is the timeline and process for hiring the new city manager. And where we left it last time, we were discussing job responsibilities, the job description and the timeline. And no, we all had. Well, we were all going to pass that information along to staff before today. And I think we all, well, everyone, almost everyone did that. So I will turn it over to staff to see where we stand on that.
I guess Ms. Ross received. The, and Ms. Fields received the revisions for the job description, Mayor. And then there were some, the request was out for maybe a couple of people from each commissioner to put on a panel or something like that. Ms. Ross or Ms. Fields, we sent both those documents out late this afternoon, I believe. As updated documents, sir.
So I think the main thing were the job descriptions, the job responsibilities, and I think that was the main thing for today. And as far as the committees for who would actually do the interviewing, I think that was decided we would wait till. We were actually advertising for the position. But. Did everyone get a chance to look at the updated job descriptions, job responsibilities that were sent out earlier? Okay.
Yes.
I'll open it up for discussion.
I had one question, Mayor, ma'am.
Sure. Commissioner Walderich.
I have it where it says the membership of the International City County Management Association is preferred. Are you, and I did not submit that. However, is that whomever submitted that, are you asking for them to already be a part? Are you asking them that when they come aboard, we would like them to be a part of that association? Excuse me, sorry.
Sure, that was me. I think it would be, you know, I think ideally they would already know and be a member of that organization, which would imply that they were already. Active in some type of city administration or city management field, but if not, I think it would be wise to be a member of that. Once they, they came on board. So that's something I think that we could change. I know with my, there's professional organizations you're just part of. If you get a designation or certification or if you're a professional. It's wise to be a part of your, whatever the governing body is and the Board of Standards, if you will. That's what I had in mind there. Any other discussion on this? Commissioner Unger. You have the floor.
I, you know, I quickly was able to, sorry, I was quickly was able to read over some of these changes. I don't see anything that pops out to me that is an issue. I like the added paragraph that we have, have on that. About Frankfurt moving forward, you know, new Board of Commissioners. I don't see anything that I would disagree with or want to change yet. So. I also think, you know, as far as timeline, I, I would like to default to staff and, you know, what Kathy thinks, but, you know, four, four weeks. It's sort of what I was sort of thinking about timeline. And then I know we also were discussing relocation funds and I would. Agree to. Say we should, we should have that option on here. And was also wondering if we say a certain amount or if that's something that's left sort of open. So Kathy, I don't know if you would be able to talk to that.
Sure. In the past, relocation has tended to be around $12,000 that the board has offered. But I think it would be worth considering leaving it open as the candidate is selected and understanding what their particular needs are.
Commissioner Walderich.
I can agree with Commissioner Unger. I appreciate some of the changes that fellow BOC has sent in. I think that some of the, it strengthens this. Quite a bit, but I also am concerned about the moving expense. I understand we're going to leave that open. But is there a ballpark? I know, you know, what, I can't remember. I was not on the board. Kathy, when. Cindy was brought in from another state, you know, how much did that cost us a movie? What would be a rough number or could we, you know, know what that expense was to where we can say we're going to maybe up to a certain amount versus just leaving it open?
What I have seen since I've been here, we've had a couple of city managers that have come from out of state that that relocation landed kind of in the, you know, approximately $12,000.
Sorry, thank you.
Commissioner Thompson.
Ms. Fields, is a, is a four-week timeline, is that in your opinion too tight or is that doable? Or are we cutting off our nose to spite our face by making it so short that we don't necessarily get all the. Possible applicants that we could if we go any further?
I actually think four weeks is probably about the ideal spot. It could be slightly less or slightly more, but I think. If you go much less, you could jeopardize losing candidates because they may not be aware. If you go much more, you jeopardize losing candidates because they've moved on to other jobs or. I think there is a point where you can stretch it too long. So I think really close to the four-week mark for a position of this level seems just about right and it's kind of the norm.
When, when do you foresee us? Obviously, this discussion makes a difference in this, but when, when do you see this begin advertising for this position?
Really, that's up to the direction provided by the board. It's sounding like there's minimal change to the document. So posting it. If that is the direction the board wishes to go, could be done by HR staff quite quickly and the four weeks could begin. But if the board wishes to have more time, that's okay too. So we can be entirely flexible with that, but we could work with about any timeline you all direct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Commissioner Walderich.
Yes, Mayor, I would like to go ahead and instruct HR, Ms. Kathy and staff to go ahead and move forward with the corrections that we've submitted. I feel that it's a very strong advertising and I would like to instruct them to go ahead and move forward and if possible, start getting this out on the websites as, as early as tomorrow. For Tuesday, if they could go ahead. I think like she said, these changes have been simple. There is not a lot, but it allows her to go ahead and get to it on Tuesday to hit the ground running. Make those changes and start getting it out on the website so we can start our month counting tomorrow.
Let me ask one question. So my only concern about doing it at this moment is with what we have going on. With the parcels, you know, is it, are we? So let's say, let me ask Ms. Fields, and if we, if we put it out there tomorrow, let's say, and we're talking four weeks, we're going into March. And then we are potentially looking at bringing someone in about the end of March. Is that the timeline that we're looking at here? If we put it out?
Excuse me. I think if we posted this week, say postings go out on Tuesday, postings go out on Wednesday, because we'll post in multiple spots. So maybe within a couple of days, those postings go out and we post for four months. There still needs to be a window to select candidates, to notify those candidates that are coming in for interviews. So. I think it's possible for the board to complete the interviews in mid to later March. But by the time a person would be on board, it would probably be in maybe early to mid-April. Depending on the candidate and how much notice they would provide. Does that answer the question?
It does. And that's, I think, right now, that's, that's my hangup, right, is, is do we, you know, we don't know what the timeline is on the parcels. But we're hoping that it's sooner than later. And I do think that that is something we do. I would like to get. Behind this before we made a change like that because we do right now, we have some traction. I know we're making decisions, you know, we're making decisions. I think that it'd be nice to not insert. Someone else into the equation at this moment.
Mayor, my, my concern is that, that the parcels B and C process. Including state TIP application, so on and so forth. Could go on for a significant amount of time. And if we essentially put this, this change on hold. Until we get some type of resolution or closure, what have you. That, that may be quite a while down the road and that would, that would kind of defeat the purpose I see is that we want to move on this quickly. And get somebody in there and the quicker they get in there, the quicker they can get acclimated. So I worry about using the parcels B and C development and what's going on with that as the gatekeeping. Process that may delay this. I think we need to move on this quickly and. The quicker we can get somebody in, in the position, the better for everybody involved. I don't want to see this. As something that we put off and put off and put off because. We have, have a level of expectation that needs to be met during this. This parcels B and C scenario. So that, that's just what I would counter with that. And I respect your, your position on that. I just. Believe we need to move. Expeditiously.
I hear that. I just think that right now. I don't, well, we don't know what the timeline is, but I feel like that we're going to be making a decision sooner than later on that. I mean, I feel like that that is, I don't. Well, we don't know. And I know it's not on the agenda, parcels B and parcel C. So, but I just feel like that that is something that. Is not a summertime thing. I think that it's a springtime decision that that will be made. I'm hopeful. So if, you know, I just feel like if we're bringing in someone else, it's just like with the new commission coming on, we're going to be bringing everyone up to speed. I think now we all have a better understanding. I think we all can make the decision. If we bring someone else in. I think that slows us down. Commissioner Walderich.
Mayor, I'm sorry. I guess I'll have to agree with, disagree with you because I feel like. The parcel B is a reason why we need to move forward with the new city manager. I mean, we, the past city manager, you know, was let go who had all knowledge of this. And I think, like you said, we have been abreast to what's going on with this now to where we as a BOC can try to make the best decisions for the BOC. But I think if we use that as an excuse, I think that's sort of like a shame on us because we clearly see right now. In how the, how that meeting went last Wednesday, there were so many different questions from each of us from the BOC. There was a lot of confusion. Even the county is confused, you know, they did not get their answers. You know, when our interim manager was meeting with them, they didn't get all the answers they needed. We, that should show us how dire this, this hiring of this person is. We have no one right now to have these hard conversations with the state. With the developers, with us as individuals to abreast of what's really going on with the TIP and what's really going on with parcel B. I mean, we read in the newspaper and the person that has the most knowledge is Keith Parker. And I think if we were to say anything, if we wanted to. Push the hiring of a city manager at this time for the city of Frankfurt further, late spring, early summer. I think, you know, I mean, it almost puts it on the table with the community, the safety of the TIP and the area downtown in the parcel B would maybe even bring Keith Parker back in an interim position or a contract position. So we have someone who is fully aware of what's going on with TIP and parcel B. We have someone who has a plethora of knowledge that we can maybe hire for a contract period. To get us back on track because right now we have staff that we're depending on. But again, we need someone in this interim city manager position and to be a full-time city manager, and we just don't have that right now. You know, and I feel really iffy about that. We continue, I feel like, you know, we're stepping on eggshells in this situation when facts upon facts and, and things upon things continue to present itself. And we're still stepping on eggshells and our community is depending on us to choose the right person, to move in the right direction for Frankfurt and continue to do what's best for this city. And to be honest, right now, the person that is all knowing beyond me and everyone else would be Keith Parker. And if it was able, I'm not sure Ms. Ross would say, but, you know, it would be great to bring him back in a capacity to help with this situation until we did hire someone and still give him the option to apply for city manager. But to continue down the road we're going right now with a bunch of question marks, I mean, it's. It's, it's just, it's like a big, oh duh, big red truck. We just can't keep going. I brought up new information. As a BOC, you'd receive those, that information. Today in the email, I know it came out a little bit later. I'm not sure if you guys had time to look over it, but you know, my concerns with keeping down this road. Is putting our city and could put our city in a very dangerous position regarding with the pandemic, the end that you, I or no one knows in what direction this is going to go or when it's going to spike or when it's not. We're hoping for more vaccines for our community, for the state, but right now, you know, I think. For me, and that's why I moved it down to an actual item, is that giving the information that was sent out in today's email, that is one thing that we need to talk about in our process for city manager. How do we move forward? What's best for Frankfurt in this very vulnerable stage that our city's in? And what I, and what I suggest is that reading over the documents that you have all received, you've received one, two, three, many options, many options in keeping interim city manager in the. In, in the seat that he seats now versus moving him over as murder director. And then the last option, which is basically move him back over to interim. Back over to director of emergency management where he can handle, we feel safe with the whole pandemic, he can concentrate on that. And we allow Ms. Ross, who is our assistant city manager, to step up in administrative duties. And also delegate out what needs to be out along with our wonderful planning and zoning director, Eric Cockley, who is knowing of projects that can step in. Take over those projects and lead them forward while you, me, the BOC moves forward and hunting for a city. A city manager. And I think we really need to be serious about that because if we continue down this road, Mayor, you know, it's going to fall back on the P, the BOC on what happens to, you know, if we continue to manipulate this process. In giving the vaccines and things of that nature. For me, I don't want that to fall on me. What I want is for my director to be there. Because if he's going to be off for three months as what seasonal is. It's really going to harm our pandemic. It's really going to harm if we do not move him now, the staff to be prepared to handle that area. While he's gone for three months. And then we also had taken consideration, you know, his 38 hours, has he done all of his training for that? We want to make sure he continues to stay trained up. So he is the best director we need. That is what I feel like we should be talking about as another process in moving forward and not. Oh, well, we're all knowing of the TIP now. We just need to handle out, you know, stay low and then hire the manager later. I just think we really need to talk about this. We need to really talk through this, Mayor. That's just my opinion.
Thank you, Commissioner Walderich. Any other discussion? I'll just, what people may not be aware of, we do have, there were some options sent out today as far as. The interim city manager and the seasonality of that. I don't think people may be aware of. There is a timeframe there and we'll have some options to decide upon at the next meeting. But I'll open it up for more discussion. Yes, Mr. Russell. Can't hear you.
I'm an old guy. You'll have to excuse that. I'm not sure that everybody on the board of commissioners is aware of how many conversations we've had with the developer. where we stand on that. It's, everybody's not privy to that information. Also, as far as emergency management goes, I've been running emergency management on a seasonal capacity for five years now. My two guys are, are handpicked in that, in that position. And I chose the seasonal capacity because it, it roughly saved, it saves the city roughly $70,000 a year for my three guys. So we are not behind on COVID there. We are versed in everything that has come out and gone down the pipe. And I don't feel like that we have missed anything. Now, I might not have answered some questions at the fiscal court meeting. He asked about some small projects and one I didn't know, I could not remember the exact details on. But I feel like it's better for me to say, I'm not sure of the answer and go back and get it and present it to him. And that's what I did. So, you know, I don't know that we're behind on anything. We're still providing essential services. We're still providing more emergency services. And that's, I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that sitting in this chair doing both positions while every now and then gets a little bit time consuming. I have great staff on both sides of the street right here. And we are nobody, we are not lacking or suffering.
Thank you, Tom. Mr. Russell. Any other, Commissioner Waterage.
Yes, I have a question for interim city manager. And so, and, and yes, I see, you know, you're doing your thing, you know, and it takes a lot to go up, but you know, I, I did come from another commission. I know how this all started. So, you know, it's, it's sort of unravels for me to see, you know, some of this going on and where we've come from, where we are today. You know, I look forward to see who's going to apply for city manager because I think this ball is continuing to get larger and it's continuing to roll down this hill. So, you know, I want to see that, you know, to see where, where the dominoes lay. But for me, for the, for you, a question for you is, you know, I understand you, you're aware that you are a seasonal employee. You know, you're aware of the time that you have to take off. How do you feel about that approaching April 1 so quickly? And the, in the situation we're in that, you know, we may not have a city manager and you're seasonal, meaning you would have to take off those. How do you feel about that? And why do you think that that conversation from an interim city manager has not come up with H R? Or you've not brought that, you know, issue, knowing that it happens every year with our mayor and with our solicitor?
Are you talking about the time, the upcoming timeframe, Commissioner, for April, May and June? I had had a conversation with Ms. Ross earlier in the year, asking about contract, things of that nature. We didn't pursue that because Ms. Ross is still there as the assistant city manager I've offered. We've, we've provided you all several options on how to get through this. And we're just asking that for clearance from the state to make sure that it is above board per se and that we're not going to suffer any, they're not fines, but payments, late payments or something, something like that for retirement and things of that nature.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Thompson.
I, I just think it has to be pointed out though, that all of the options that were presented essentially provide for Mr. Russell to stay in his position until a new city manager is chosen. So we, we could have a financial detriment to the city, not have a city manager. And Mr. Russell would still be in that position. And I, I, while I am very thankful for the work that was provided to us to say, these are the options. I, I think the other option that is out there and that was discussed previously is that we, we don't have to stay in that same track and keep Mr. Russell in the position that he's at as city manager. And I think that while there may be a financial obligation that I was just made aware of today, but explained by Ms. Fields to me later, I, I still think that's an option and it hasn't been presented to us that that is an option for us to take as well. So I, I just want the board of commissioners to, to understand that, that there are other options that don't include making a decision on April 1, what we're going to do with Mr. Russell. We, we couldn't make other decisions and I, I just want that to be aired out. And if anybody else has any discussion on that, I'd love to hear it.
I'll just point out, I'll say one thing, and, and my preference is not to replace an interim with an interim. I think, you know, if, if we have a choice, I think we should go ahead and, and look for the permanent city manager or the, or the, yeah, the permanent one. And, and I think replacing with an interim, with another interim, I think that's just, I think that's just bad form. I think that we need to go ahead and find the permanent one and not just go through the motions. And, and then also talk about doing a co-interim with two people. I think that just further complicates it. I think we should, I think we should go ahead and, and try to find the permanent. And if, you know, if Mr. Russell wants to apply or if any, anyone else wants to apply, they can. But I think that's the direction we need to go. And I, and if we have any, if I have any other influence, I'd say, I'd rather it be after we get the, the parcels discussion behind us because there are, you know, it is closer than people think. I think there are a lot of, you know, we're just waiting on a couple of dominoes to fall. And I think introducing, again, inserting someone else into the equation just further complicates it. And that's all, that's just a hand that we're dealt. I don't think anybody thinks it's perfect right now, but I think it's, it's, it's pretty good though. And I think that, that's, that would be my, my suggestion is we get that behind us. But I also know we need to be mindful of this March 31st timeline as well. So Commissioner Waterage. Can't hear you, Commissioner Waterage.
Oh, a response back to your comment first would be, you know, I don't foresee us replacing an interim with an interim. Because regardless of what you're doing, I mean, he had a full-time job somewhere else. So what we're doing, what we would be doing is placing him back in his full-time capacity of emergency director. And then allowing Laura to continue what she does daily as assistant city manager. And then what Eric Cockley would do in planning and zoning, but he would just make sure that he is that spokesperson more, even though he is giving us those answers. So technically, we're not replacing the interim with the interim. And even if we were to bring back Keith for a contract, I don't think that that would be an interim that would be considered a contract to work on what is viable right now for our city as far as the TIF and that. But, you know, with the conversation, I enjoy hearing, you know, Kyle and your opinions and thoughts on this. Because then it says, okay, well, if Tommy's doing a great job as emergency director, it was a full, it's a full-time position to be emergency director. And since he's doing such a wonderful job as an emergency management and an interim city manager, maybe we need to go back and look at the city manager position again. And maybe we should add emergency director so we can save the money for that salary since it seems to be safe for everyone on this board that, you know, it's, it's safe to have our emergency director over here worried about contracts and other things in the middle of a pandemic. Should we save the salary of a, of an emergency director and make that one of the job requirements? And one of the responsibilities of a city manager, since it seems to be flowing and we're not, we're not putting our city at any risk, you know, that saves us, it saves us money. And then we, and he has two wonderful people over there working under him that could then work with the city manager. You know, I mean, this goes all the way to this, the county as well, you know, and working back and forth. And how many people are working in emergency management? You know, I mean, he has a full staff. And so I don't know, that could be an option, you know, to put it underneath the city manager since it doesn't seem like it's an issue for our board to have our executive director continue to serve as interim city manager. Maybe we need to change that.
Any other discussion? And I guess at this point, it's an action item. So I'll entertain a motion to, we can direct staff to post this at a certain date, by a certain time. Or we can move on. Commissioner Waterage.
Um, well, I, I could make a motion if, if we've already corrected. I didn't know that a motion, I don't think we need a motion. We just direct staff to move forward if we're okay with the changes of the job description to allow them to go ahead and move forward with posting. I don't, I don't think we need a motion for that. Am I correct, Laura? We just need to instruct staff to move forward with go aheading.
As long as there's no objection, you also could make a motion if you so chose, now that it's an action item.
Okay. When we look at the job description, so the only things that were changed, we changed the, the narrative about Frankfurt being a great place to be right now. And it's a good opportunity for the next city manager, once in a career opportunity. And then we also changed a couple of the requirements. We changed a couple of the, or preferences. I C M A preference and then the experience working with budgets. Is that a requirement or is that a preference on the, the dollar amount for the budgets or grants? Are you following me?
It's currently listed as a preference, Mayor.
Great. Okay. So without further discussion and without objection, we will direct staff to, well, we will direct staff to list that. And then we can decide later as to, to the committee and who's going to do the interviewing. We have time for that. We have time to decide what to do because it's not likely that will be wrapped up before the deadline of March 31st, is it? You're on meet solicitor Ross, if you're trying to talk.
Sorry, probably not. As Kathy said, the timeline is probably, it, it could, but it's going to take us at least into March and, and more than likely into April.
Okay. So if we go on and post it, which we can do, and we're not going to hire a search firm. We're just going to post it on the sites, the national sites that where people like this would be looking. Then we, we have our voting meeting to decide on how to handle the, the March 31st deadline. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Without objection, we'll direct staff to go ahead. Commissioner Waterage.
I know I have a lot to say on this. So I apologize, but you know, talking through this gets us to understand, you know, I am uneasy with the whole city manager, interim city manager. I am. And I worry for the city. I worry, you know, in the direction we're going and how we continue to put this off when the facts are in front of us. I really do. I feel like I'm, I'm seeing a snowball effect. And I can't wait till this gets out to see who is applying because it, it's, it's sort of, it's eye opening to see that we now, as stated, I think, what, actually think you actually put it on the job description was the, I, it's hard to go back to screens and see our opening, sorry, online. But is it the C, the I C M A? What is that committee again?
It's the International City and County Managers Association.
Yes. And so, you know, why things seem a little, I guess you could say irked for me and why I ask questions is because I do see a snowball effect with this. It's, it's something held over from the other commission. Like, you know, the first time that I heard of the I C M A basically came from Eric Wissman. He had brought that up. He felt like that that was something he felt that the next city manager should possess, should hold. And so that, though I do not, not that I don't disagree, I know we spoke of it. He said, you know, I feel like if they come in, they can be a part of that. But when things like that arise, it worries me. You know, as though there's something in the pipeline that is, oh, meet this criteria, meet this criteria, check, check. Let's change this, check, check to make sure certain people are getting in this. So I look forward to see who's applying, definitely. But with the I C M A, it doesn't set well with me. It does professionally as I see that. But the first time that it was mentioned would be from Eric Wissman and it, that just doesn't set well with me and, and moving over. But also, you know, just furthermore, you know, we continue to push this off. I, I guess we're going to walk on eggshells around this and continue to move around this easy and slowly. But, you know, action needs to be taken. We can continue to talk about action and, and actually making motions to move forward and, and keep Frankfurt going in the right direction for a new vision. But we're still peddling on this will and on this will. And we've brought it up to now already two, three, four meetings now with our community and not really making mo- movement forward except for now we have a job description that we basically have, have approved that will now go out for, to us to start this program. With that being said, it is under an action item. I think at this moment, I'd like to make a motion to dismiss interim city manager responsibilities from Tommy and allow him to move back over full-time to emergency management director. Therefore, at that time in this motion, Laura, who is already in that capacity, nothing is added on except for a few her to delegate as assistant city manager until we find a full-time city manager for her to delegate the duties out. I think this is a motion that will be better for Frankfurt, will be better for the city, will be better for our TIF and these projects. I think at this time, we are empowering our directors and our staff to step up and do what we hired them to do. They're competent in their areas. And I perceive, you know, Mr. Cockley stepping up and doing what he does. That is my motion to move forward. And then we would be able to maybe even possibly think of a contract option to possibly maybe contract. But I guess that could be another one that was just talking. So that was my motion, but to bring Keith back in maybe a contract capacity for the TIF and parcel speed.
So we have a motion to dismiss the current interim city manager to replace the assistant city manager. That's the motion.
I would second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Open up for debate, discussion. And without any, I'll ask the clerk to please call Roe.
Commissioner Waterage.
Um, I will say yes. I'll explain my vote. I think this is the best direction for us to get moving. It solidifies safety and security for our emergency management side as, and as well, it continues, there's nothing that changes in our city management here except that Laura continues being our city manager, assistant city manager. She would delegate out and then that would also leave Eric Cockley and picking up some in some of the contracts. We're not giving anyone an interim title and we're not changing anything. We're just making sure our director goes back over and our city continues to move as it has because Ms. Ross is our assistant city manager. So it's really no movement. It's just moving responsibilities over. So we do not come up on that April 1st date of being able to have to pay out more money and things of that nature. Thank you.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
No.
Commissioner Unger? No. Mayor Wilkerson?
No. And I'll continue on. I, I will say that, you know, when we talk about the I C M A, I ran for mayor in a city manager form of government town. And it was pretty clear right away what the I C M A was when I looked at the job responsibilities of a mayor and a city manager. So that was one of the first places you look. So I, I, I mean, I appreciate what you're saying, Commissioner Waterage. But I didn't, and I, and I appreciate former commissioners knowing what that was, but it, it seems. and I, and I appreciate former commissioners knowing what that was, but it, it seems in a city manager, form of government city that, that, that it should be pretty commonplace. And, um, yes, Ms. Fields.
I just wanted to share that our prior city managers have been members of I C M A. So that is a fairly, uh, common membership for people that have experience as city managers.
Commissioner Waterage.
It is pretty common. I just, coincidences are coincidences and as I said, um, I think we have done a disfavor to our city this evening, um, and we continue moving on. We continue to shovel out the city's money, uh, for a position that we shouldn't as of right now. Uh, we could do some other things. Um, we are trying to look for new vision and we're still sitting here twiddling our thumbs and continuing to waller in, uh, the past instead of moving forward is my vision and my purpose on that. Um, but again, I truly look to see who's going to apply for our city manager and where we fall with that. I think that that's really going to open the eyes of, um, our city and it will open the eyes of, um, why we are going in the direction we're going and how we are stepping on actions. So thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Unger.
Sorry, I, I am having some connectivity issues. So, so all night, things have been cutting in and out, but I, I would just like to, um, thank staff for all of your hard work. Um, and I'm not exactly sure what, um, Commissioner Waterage is alluding to here, um, but I, I believe we're moving forward. I'm, I'm excited to see, you know, what options we have, um, you know, after, um, we see who applies for city manager. So we, we have a bright future. We have a, a great board of commissioners and I hope we can all just stay focused in on, you know, the projects at hand. Um, and I would just like to thank everyone for all their time and information to, uh, get me prepped for this meeting today, so.
Okay, without further discussion, I want staff to go ahead and oppose the job, uh, the posting. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm sorry, may I have one more thing?
Yes.
And I just wanted to say, you know, Ms. Commissioner Unger, I completely understand, you know, where you come from and, and what I allude to and, and I would be willing to say that most of the information that I bring is because I do research or I'm asking, I'm communicative with a great group of people. Um, however, you know, when you've received information that there's already been people that have already been speaking about our city manager position and it's not posted, that they're going to be promised the job and things of that nature and that we're trying to push this back till June because a certain person will not be back in the country until a certain time, that's the issues that come to me from my community and that I speak with. So when I speak on things like that, it does concern me. And so that's why I say the things that I say because I speak to a lot of different people on different levels in our community and they just want to make sure that we're doing right by our city, by our taxpayers and actually moving forward in the direction we go. So I completely understand your comment and I understand what the comments that I had. So I, I don't mean them personally by all means at all. Um, but I do speak on what I've received from the community and things of that nature and how we're gathering information and that's just where I stand. And so when we see that we're making decisions when facts are, but when facts are out there, it's not personal, by all means, Tommy knows, he and I can joke around and do whatever. He's in a wonderful, uh, emergency management director. I've spoke with him every time I'm basically going to mention his name or if I don't vote for him or anything like that, we have that open communication. It's nothing personal for him. It's been the politicking of this community from where I came from on the last commission over surrounded around this complete situation. So please don't take that personal. It's just me speaking on behalf of what citizens are telling me, conversations I'm having and just trying to get down to the nitty-gritty of what's going on. So I apologize, please don't take that personal and I'll apologize to you personally that it's not personal at all. It's just me trying to speak on behalf of my community.
Great. Any other discussion? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No opposed?
Aye.
See you next time.